Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to tonight's regularly scheduled city council meeting. This meeting is called to order. I kindly ask our deputy clerk, Ms. Dawkins, to please take the role.
Bruno?
Here.
Burghart?
Here.
Clemens?
Ruby?
Here.
Kilburg?
Here.
Meladra?
Here.
Marx?
Here.
McGowan?
Here.
Radecki?
Here.
Swanson?
Here.
We are all present save for Mr. Clemens. We begin tonight's meeting with the pledge of allegiance. I would like to ask a good friend of the communities and a good friend of mine, Patty Brown, to please lead us in the pledge.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, equal and free, with liberty and justice for all.
Ladies and gentlemen, do not adjust your TV screens. I am wearing a Batavia Bulldog polo shirt as the result of losing a bet with my esteemed colleague and friend from Batavia, Mayor Jeff Shulkey. Mayor Shulkey and I often make friendly wagers on Batavia versus Geneva competitions. And I, in the words of Dean Kilburg and Bob Swanson, mistakenly made a bet this year, although I was proud to do so, on the 100th meeting of the Batavia versus Geneva football game, which took place last Friday evening in Batavia. No, I did not get points. And part of the deal was I had to wear something that said Batavia Bulldogs that was visible to the viewing audience. And rumor has it that they are watching this live in Batavia to verify that in fact I have upheld my end of the bargain. So, in that regard, please forgive me if your eyes become sore, or perhaps you lose your way. This is simply a temporary shirt that will be returned to the store immediately tomorrow. Sound good?
Still got the tags.
Still got the tags. And if no one objects, I'd like to begin tonight's meeting on a more somber note. Today, as many of you know, marks the one-year anniversary of the shooting in Las Vegas, the nation's worst mass shooting. More than 55 people killed, more than 700 injured. I would like just to begin the meeting with a moment of silence to remember those victims, to remember those survivors, and to let all of them know that the city of Geneva continues to hold them in our hearts and our thoughts. Thank you very much. We have a couple presentations tonight, ladies and gentlemen. Our first presentation is from the police department. We have a distinguished group with us tonight, and it appears that the askance look by the chief requires these two folks to head to the podium. Welcome.
Okay. How are you?
Good. Welcome. And the floor is yours. Introduce yourself to everyone tuning in and those in the audience who are putting up.
I'm Officer Preecey, and this is Officer Bodigheimer.
Welcome.
So, we're here to talk about the Citizens at Risk program that we are getting ready to implement. So, the question then becomes, what is it? The Citizens at Risk program is something that we're trying to get in place to allow people to enter themselves or a family member into a database that we will maintain, that will provide officers with immediate information should that person go missing. It'll be a photograph of that person that officers will have access to in their squad cars, as well as all of their personal information that they would like to provide or don't want to provide, it's up to them, as far as their address, family members, acquaintances, places that they might frequent, so that it makes it easier for us to locate them quicker, rather than sending an officer to the house and then trying to disseminate all this information and wasting time while that person could be driving or wandering away. It gets the information to the officers immediately. So, it is geared more toward, you know, the people who have some type of cognitive disability, whether it be dementia, autism, or something else along those lines. And the way it would work is a resident, again, they would request themselves or an immediate family member to be entered into it. Once that happens, the person would be issued a serial-numbered bracelet with the police department's phone number on it. And that way, if that person is found in another town, which often can be the case, then we still, they can still be located if they have an encounter with someone else, law enforcement, or what have you. So, that way, it goes beyond just the database that we have in our squads looking for them on the street. If they do, you know, wander out past our jurisdiction, then that bracelet will help with the safe return. Again, a recent photo is huge because a lot of times we get very vague descriptions, you know, someone's 5'8", 5'9", 150 pounds with black hair. Well, if we have an event in town, that's a good portion of the people walking around. So, a photograph is going to be very helpful. And now that we have the software and the vehicles to accommodate this, we can get that information out really quickly. So, when the officer is in their squad, this is what they will see. This is the new software that we have. And under the tab for the Citizens at Risk, which is that triangle on the very top, they would click on that, and that would bring them to the next screen, which would then alphabetize the list of people we have entered in there. They can either type in the name, and it'll go right to that person, or they can just do a search. So, again, it's getting the immediate information, known associates, places that they frequent, and what we just talked about with the photograph. Knowing a person's history, a lot of times with dementia, or if it's a person with autism, if we know their likes and dislikes, that'll help the officer, when they locate that person, to kind of calm them down and help them remain calm, so they don't want to get, you know, a lot of times, especially if it's someone with autism, the flashing lights might set them in a, you know, make them want to run from us, or something like that. So, that would be something that would hopefully be noted in the database, you know, if you approach the person, if you think you've found them, you know, take the following steps. So, it just helps us have a better rapport with the people that we're locating. And these are just some facts that are a little bit alarming, things that we're concerned with, and one of the reasons that we're, well, the main reason why we're trying to get this program going. We talked about, for example, people with autism or dementia. Unfortunately, a lot of people with those disabilities are attracted to traffic and bodies of water, both of which we have plenty of in our city. And, you know, we're always concerned with, you know, the risks and dangers with our river that runs through town. So, it would be another important thing for an officer responding. It would show up, you know, for example, if it said, "This individual likes to hang out near bodies of water, is attracted to the dam," that would be one of the first places we'd go check, just because it would be so dangerous. So, just again, more facts and figures as far as dealing with, you know, missing persons. So, we do not usually talk about the, you know, economic, financial toll of these things, because that's the last thing anyone is concerned with. But it is something that exists, and hopefully, with more information, more tools at our disposal, then we can help bring some of that down, too. So, where we're at with the program now is we're working on getting the policy in place. We have the software to get it rolling, and that's already in place. What we're working on currently is the bracelet itself. So, some departments are using these, and we don't like these, because people who have different disabilities, for example autism, many times don't like to wear things, and this will come right off. So, the preference is to go with this, which can't be removed by the individual. It takes two hands to open it, and we'll pass these around so you can look at it.
Did you notice the clasp on the one end?
It's not easy to open. And it would require two hands to get it off. We like that idea, because then the person is always going to have that on. And the information that we need will be engraved on the back of that. Plus, it really stands out, because you've got that Medical Alert logo on the front, as opposed to this, which could mean just about anything. So, that is the direction we're trying to go in. We did finally, just hours before the meeting tonight, get ahold of representatives at Medical Alert, because they do have a program called LEAP, which Officer Bodigheimer knows more about, and she was the one that finally got through to them. So, I can let her explain that portion of it to you. And I think from Officer Bodigheimer's work today on this, we will be able to utilize those. So, I'll let you talk about that.
Thanks. Thank you. So, the LEAP program is a law enforcement agency program that actually started in 2017, and it was a grant by the Department of Justice. And my contacts have since no longer work at Medical Alert, so it's been a little bit of a process trying to find out who actually is in charge. But at this time, I did finally make contact with someone, and we'll be following up with them, because the program initially was supposed to be free to law enforcement, and we log in a portal prior to our frontline that we have now. And then we would put the numbers in on the back of the bracelet ourselves and track everything that way. So, we're still in the process of getting the final details, as if the program is still free, and what all is involved with it. So, I think it's a great, a great tool that we can use.
Yeah. We have had, you know, over the years, I have had people ask if we have something like this, and we didn't. So, I usually referred them to just calling Medical Alert and just doing it themselves. And that's a wonderful thing to do, and it's a great thing to have. It's a little bit more limited than what we're offering, though, because this is more data that's right here, local, with photos and more additional information that Medical Alert doesn't typically store. They will have information, but they can only store so much, because they have so many people that they provide service to. So, we will have a little bit more to offer with our own database. We haven't had, and we don't anticipate a tremendous influx of requests. We have had a handful over the last few years, and departments that have had this program, I've asked them as well. I think the one department I spoke with last, they've had this in place for a number of years, and their population's about 34,000. I think they have maybe 60 people enrolled. So, we don't expect it to be anything, you know, enormous, but I think it's important that we at least offer it. Unless you have any questions, that was really all we had.
Any questions or comments for the officers? Alderman Bruno?
Thank you, Mayor. I don't expect you to have this number off the top of your head, but I know last we looked, we're a fairly old community in terms of the median age. I imagine as the demographic shifts, there's, we're going to see some increase in the number of individuals that might benefit from such a program.
Yeah. We don't have that, and we actually anticipated that question, and weren't able to find any numbers for that. Because we did, one of the things that we were expecting you to ask as well was, how many incidents have we handled like this? And we don't actually track the numbers that way because of how things are categorized. So, it could be missing persons, it could come in as, it could come in as a check of the welfare. So, it would be hard with the database that we have to set parameters to know how many times something like this might have helped. And I can only go by personal experience, which doesn't really give you facts and figures. So, unfortunately, we just don't have numbers to offer.
Thanks.
I can tell you, I also do the senior care, and that's kind of relevant to this situation with Alzheimer's and dementia being a huge medical issue these days with the older population and even younger. We do have about 55, 55 to 60 seniors registered in our senior care. And, you know, that's based on, you know, I went to their house on a call, or, you know, talked to them on a traffic stop, or whatever contact I may have had with them on duty. So...
Great. Thank you.
Alderman Ruby?
Thanks for the presentation. I love the idea. I'm curious more about the bracelet. You touched on a lot of the issues, but is there any information on if somebody has a bracelet that really doesn't want it, especially if they have a mental disorder, for example, you know, if they can't get it off? Is there concern about them, you know, hurting themselves trying to get it off, that kind of thing? Has that been addressed at all?
I've never heard of that.
Okay.
Being an issue with it.
Okay.
You know, I do work for Special Olympics, and I know a number of the athletes do not like wearing things.
Sure.
I'm sorry. But I've never heard of any of them, you know, harming themselves trying to get it removed.
Okay.
I think that would be something, too, that, you know, their caretakers would have to, you know, be aware of.
Sure.
And we'd have to have that discussion with them. If they thought that was a concern, then we may not make them wear it.
Okay.
We can still put them in our database, and they can still be part of our Citizens at Risk program. You know, ideally, they would have that on, but it's not, they wouldn't have to in order for us to have them in our database and us to have that information.
Sure.
It's just helpful if they are to leave our area.
Okay. But I do love the clasp that takes two hands. I was wondering about that, and then I saw the bracelet, and it was perfect.
Yeah. It's a good question, though, but I've never heard of that as an issue.
Okay.
So, I think, too, that if they were to pull hard enough on things, the little links that are in there would give way.
Sure.
Yeah. Because it's not, you know, it's stainless steel, but they're pretty small.
Okay.
So, I think it would probably break.
All right. Thank you.
Alderman Kilburg?
Obviously, dementia and autism are two issues that result in people getting lost, and this program seems as though it's geared toward missing persons.
Yes.
Primarily. I think one of the things that's been identified in our society today, that it's an even greater problem, would be mental health issues. And I'm sure that our Geneva Police Department, as well as our paramedics, are called out on mental health issues. How are they treated differently than, I mean, is there any overlap here? Is there anything that the city could provide as far as a database to support families that have family members that are dealing with those types of issues, serious issues, possibly depression or potential suicide, so that our police department is aware and informed? When they get a call, a 911 call, that they know that they're going to a situation that could be problematic?
We do have an officer designated as a mental health specialist in our department, and he has experience working in that field. So, he is our mental health officer that will address those issues as they come up. And we will often send him an email and say, "Hey, we had this call at this residence. Can you do some follow-up and check on them?" And then he can go from there. He, and he's usually the one that will refer them to other services if need be. He'll go and visit with them and kind of assess the situation. He'll get the information back out to us in patrol, so we know what we're dealing with. If it's an individual that's a danger to themselves, the community, or us, then that information can be put into our dispatch center as well, so that if we are dispatched to that residence, we're aware before we get there what the potential risks are.
Okay. Thank you. That's all good to know. And I'm sure residents would be, that have not maybe taken advantage of those resources would appreciate what you've just shared. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I know Alderman McGowan, and then Alderman Burghart, but if I may piggyback on what Alderman Kilburg said, many of us know that the officers on patrol who have the CMT badge, Crisis Management Team, are trained specifically to help de-escalate situations that oftentimes involve folks who perhaps aren't themselves at the time. So, and we have, I believe, 15 officers?
I want to say it's at least half the department now.
I was going to say we're up to 29.
We're up to 29. I know that's tough to get into class, but there's a demand for that, and so, that's awesome.
And I know the goal is that everyone will eventually have that certification. I think there's recently people that just attended that class.
Good.
It's a very good class, and I think it's probably long overdue.
Right.
I take a little bit of pride in saying that our department, a lot of the information that they teach in that class, a lot of it wasn't new to us, you know. And I'll say that because I think we have a good department when it comes to understanding those issues and avoiding that confrontation that might not be necessary, because someone does have a mental illness, and how to de-escalate that situation. So, I think that as a department, we've been really good at doing that. It is challenging, and sometimes, as you point out, the biggest thing would be just to know ahead of time that that's what it is. I had a, I actually do have a very good friend who still lives in town, and his parents lived here as well. They've passed away. He had a brother who was autistic, and the parents had confided in me that their biggest concern for their son was police contact more accidental than anything else, him being in the wrong place at the wrong time, and saying yes to all of our questions, and us thinking he did something he didn't do. I really wished they had expressed that concern to me sooner, because that just, I can guarantee that it would not have happened. All the officers I know would have identified quickly what his situation was, or that something was a little off, and they would not have jumped to that conclusion. So, and that's where CIT is important, too, that, us having that certification. So, I am proud to say that I think this would be one of the last communities I've expect to see that happen.
Good. Alderman McGowan. Alderman Burghart?
Oh, thank you. I just wanted to say that I was having the same questions that Alderman Ruby had about the bracelet being a source of, like, stress to a person. I mean, I, there's a reason why I don't have any jewelry on. I can't stand having bracelets or things. So, I think that maybe you would have someone who would find a way to cut the bracelet off, or, I mean, where there's a will, there's a way. Or it could be that the bracelet would be stressful. So, I definitely have heard of that situation. It wouldn't surprise me whatsoever. But that being said, I do think it's a great idea for the community, and I'm really happy to see that you're working hard to get this program started, and I think it's going to be very helpful to people.
Thank you. I don't think the bracelet is foolproof. I just thought it was a better option than this.
Oh, it definitely is. Yeah. And then, as you said, you've got the database, the information in the recent photo of the person as a backup to, to help find the missing person.
Yes. And, I mean, that's really, in my opinion, the most important aspect of it.
Yeah, definitely.
Just to get the information quickly to the officers that, I mean, they're going to have it on their way there. I mean, or even before they start going there, they're going to be able to have that up on the, on the screen, so...
Yeah. Thank you.
Alderman Burghart?
Mayor?
Alderman Burghart.
This presentation obviously is going to attract some interest, and you don't have everything set in place. So, if somebody's watching tonight or hears about it, and they're worried that they're going to miss when you officially launch it, what should they do? Call either one of you and leave a voicemail? If you're not in the task?
That's fine. They can just call the police department, main number, and they can ask for Officer Preecey, Officer Bodigheimer, or Officer Russo. He's not here right now, he's working the street, but he'll be aware of everything that's going on as well.
And you can take their information and...
We can get their information, and we can get things going for them.
Great. All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else on the dais? Anyone in the audience with any questions for the officers? Thank you both very, very much.
Thank you.
Keep up the great work.
Thank you.
See if I can get this on.
Our next presentation, ladies and gentlemen, is the Geneva Police and Firefighters Actuarial Valuation Reports. Presentation which I know we've all been anxiously awaiting. We welcome our finance manager, Rita Cruz, with her guest this evening.
Good evening. Jason Franken from Foster &amp; Foster is here to present and answer questions about the Geneva Police and Firefighter Pensions Annual Actuarial Evaluation.
Thank you. As Rita mentioned, my name is Jason Franken, and I am a fellow of the Society of Actuaries and enrolled actuary with Foster &amp; Foster in Naperville. So, what I'm here to discuss tonight is the May 1st, 2018 Actuarial Evaluations for the Police and Fire Pension Funds. So, I could be here for hours talking about this, but I know you...
I feel like it anyway.
Well, that's true, true.
This shirt's very uncomfortable.
So, I, but I realize you have probably more important things to tend to this evening than the actuary, listen to the actuary. So, I'm going to try and keep my presentation brief, but I want to make sure that you have all of your questions answered. So, feel free to ask questions at any point. I believe everybody has a copy of the evaluations in your agenda packet. So, if you want to flip to page, I believe it's page eight, this is the summary of the Actuarial Evaluation for the Police Pension Fund. And I'll probably focus primarily on the police fund, because the evaluations are similar. I will touch briefly on the fire results, but a lot of the concepts are the same. So, what we've done here, as I said, is the May 1st, 2018 Actuarial Evaluation. And what an Actuarial Evaluation is, is each year, at the end of your fiscal year, which ends on April 30th, we collect all of the personnel data, all of the active police officers and firefighters, all of the retirees, and all of the pertinent information that allows us to determine what the liabilities for these people are. And by, and when we calculate these liabilities, we have to make several assumptions. What's the investment-return assumption going to be? What's our, what is the rate of return our assets are going to earn over the long term? What are the salary increases going to be? All of, you know, all of that information, then we take assumptions, and then we have what's called actuarial methods, which are primarily just budgeting mechanisms. How are we going to pay for this pension, these pension benefits over time? The assumptions that we use, you know, they should reflect what we expect the plan to earn, or the experience we expect the plan to have over time. What, how are our assets invested, and what rate is, you know, is the fund going to earn? And after we have all of the personnel data, we have the assumptions, we have our methods, we calculate our liabilities, we compare that to our assets. And our assets, we actually use a five-year smooth asset value. And what that means is we recognize investment gains and losses over a five-year period to eliminate some of the volatility that's, that would arise based on the market. And so, at the end of the day, we have our asset value, we have our liability value, and we can compare those. At this point, your plans, along with pretty much every pension plan in the state, has what's called unfunded liability. Our liabilities are larger than our assets. And so, we calculate what your unfunded liability is, we calculate what your funded ratio is, and then based on those two factors, you know, we determine what the annual required contribution is to the plan. And then that amount is levied and collected, and then deposited into the plan. So, on page eight, when we're looking at the police pension fund, you know, the bottom set of numbers here, we're recommending the city contribution increase from, it was, it was a little, it was a little less than $1.4 million last year for this particular plan, and we're recommending an increase this year up to $1,566,101. So, it was a increase of about $200,000. Some of that has to do with the experience in the plan over the last number of years. Some of it was just some of the differences between our calculations and those that were performed by the prior actuary. So, we are seeing a increase of about almost $200,000 for the police plan. For the fire plan, which is a smaller plan, there's less people in that plan, the value of the, the magnitude of the numbers is a little bit less, but we are seeing an increase there from around $550,000 up to $694,000. So, again, a fairly, you know, substantial increase this year over, over last year. If you flip ahead to page, actually, yeah, page 11, I want to focus on the bottom two rows of numbers here. There's actually three columns. We did make some minor changes this year, but, you know, like I said, pretty, pretty minor, and that's why there's three columns. Last year, those are the right-hand column, that's the results based on last year's valuation. The middle column shows what our results were this year, based on no changes to any of the assumptions or methods. And then the left-hand column is where we ultimately ended up. And you'll see that our unfunded liability remained pretty, pretty flat. It actually went down by, you know, a few thousand dollars, but you do have an unfunded liability of about almost $17.7 million in the plan at this point. Currently, that's, when you think of your unfunded liability, we have what's called an amortization payment. You have to pay that down over time, so you can think of the $17.7 million in the police plan as a mortgage that you have, and you're currently targeting to eliminate that amount by, by about, by 2040. So, that's how we're paying this off. It's really a 22, 23-year mortgage at this point that we're hoping to eliminate by 2040. The state law requires that we reach a 90% funded ratio by 2040, so you are targeting a higher threshold than, than the 90%. But I do think that looking to eliminate all of the debt, rather than ignoring 10% of it, is a sound decision. And, you know, I recommend we continue to stay on that path of funding towards a target of 100% rather than 90%. On page 10, just briefly, the contribution requirement, so this demonstrates the, how we calculate the amount that needs to be contributed. You'll see the first section, it was called, what's called the normal cost. of what's called, what's called the normal cost. That's the value of the benefits that are being earned by the current active employees. So each year, they earn an additional year of service. Their pay, you know, most cases goes up, you know, from one year to the next. So the normal cost is what was the value of my pension at the beginning of year versus the value of my pension at the end of the year. And whatever that increase is for all of the active employees, that's what's called the normal cost. It's really the current cost of the pension plan for your active employees. Then we have administrative expenses. That's a relatively small number of about $32,000. Then we have our amortization payment. That's that amount that we're paying each year to eliminate our unfunded liability. And you'll see at this point, our, our amortization payment is $1,029,000. Our normal cost is $851,000. So we're actually paying more to eliminate that unfunded liability than what we're providing to our, our current active employees. The one thing about this number here, this $1,029,000, is this is the number that is affected by what's called, which you've probably heard of, the pension ramp. So that number is designed to increase year over year. And the payroll growth assumption was, is what determines how steep that contribution, you know, how, how quickly that contribution increases. So just to give you an idea of the current pension ramp that you're on, that $1,029,000 contribution or amortization payment is designed to increase by 5% per year, every year until the year 2040. So in the year 2040, we expect that $1,000,000 to be, to increase to $2.9 million. So that part of your contribution payment is designed to triple over the next 22 years. The normal cost, we expect to remain relatively flat, but this piece of it, which is more than half of the total contribution, is designed to increase threefold over the next 22 years. So our recommendation is to change, in this year's valuation, we didn't really change any assumptions just because of, of timing, because of transition. But next year, we're going to recommend some changes to the assumptions to better reflect the actual anticipated experience. And this particular assumption, you know, when you increase, you know, increase, or excuse me, when you decrease your payroll growth assumption, it, it's going to decrease your future contributions. But in order for the, that unfunded liability to pay, to, to still be paid off, it's going to require larger contributions today. Pensions are pay now or, or pay later. And right now, as, as evidenced by that tripling that we're expecting, you, there's a, a fair amount of backloading in your contribution pattern that, that's your, your funding policy that you've been using. So we're going to make some changes, recommend some changes that be made in order to eliminate some of that backloading and shift some of the contribution requirements to, to today. Because we don't think it's financially sound to have a, a contribution pattern that is so backloaded. And in fact, if you flip to the next page, page 14, in Section H, this shows you the expected unfunded liability based on your current contribution pattern and assuming everything else goes according to plan. So we get our, we get our 7.25% return every year. And you'll notice that in 2018, your unfunded liability is at $17,652. Well, next year, you'll notice that it doesn't go down. In fact, it goes up. It goes from 17.65 to 17.90. And that's because that pension ramp, there's, you know, at, at this point in the pension ramp, there's what's called the negative amortization that's going on with your plan. And what negative amortization is, is I'll compare it to a credit card, having a credit card bill of $1,000 that you have to pay off. The interest on your credit card is $100 per month, but you're only making payments of $80. So your payment is not large enough to cover the interest on your credit card balance. In this case, your payment isn't large enough to cover the interest that's accumulating on your unfunded liability. So as a result, you're making the payment, but your unfunded liability is still going up. And you'll see it increases next year to 17.9. The year after that, it goes up to 18.1. And then, you know, as your contributions increase by that 5% per year, eventually you'll get to the point where you start paying it down. But in this case, if you look at 2025, we expect the unfunded liability to be 18.5 million. That's an increase of $900,000 from where it is today. So if you just think about that for a second, for the next seven years, you're making, you're going to be making payments and your unfunded liability isn't going to go down at all. In fact, it's going to go up by, by $900,000. And then as those payments continue to increase by 5% per year, you know, down the road, those payments, as I mentioned, are going to be enormous. And you can look, just look at the, the last two lines in this section. In 2036, we expect to have almost $11.1 million of unfunded liability. And over the next five years after that, you're going to go from $11.1 million down to zero unfunded liability. So that gives you a sense of how large those payments are going to be in, in, in 2040. And the years leading up to 2040, that you're going to, over the next seven years, you're going to, your unfunded liability's going to increase by $900,000. And then those last five years, it's going to go down by $11.1 million. So again, there is a, a lot of backloading that's in, in that funding policy as it, as it is now. We'd like to work towards removing some of that unf- that backloading and start paying down our unfunded liability a little sooner. Obviously, you know, that's up to you guys in terms of where's this money going to come from. But I think it's a discussion worth, worth having, you know, here in the next, next year or so. And finally, just, I'll, I'll wrap up with, on, on page 18, just some of the actuarial assumptions. One of the, you know, probably the most important assumption that everyone knows about is the interest rate assumption. This is our, what we expect our investments to get. Currently, we're assuming seven and a quarter percent. That's, that's a little high relative to, to your peers. Most, most plans are in the six and a half to 7% range. People have, this year especially, have been moving away from the 7% if they can to lower it a little bit. So that's another assumption that's going to potentially need adjustment here in the future. And by lowering our investment return assumption, we've lowered the amount that we expect to be earned from our investments. And so when you lower your investment income, it increases your contribution requirements. So this is another assumption that when it's changed, it is going to, I, I think when we change it, it will be more reflective of the, the return that we expect to get. But by lowering it, it is going to increase our liability and our, our contribution requirements. So like I said, there's a lot here. I think I've covered the, the highlights. I'm happy to answer any questions that anybody has.
Well, I know we're all very happy. So if Alderman Marks, the floor is yours, then Alderman Swanson.
Who sets that seven and a quarter interest rate?
That, that's an assumption that we collaboratively need to set.
But who sets it currently? Is it, is it the council or?
Well, I, this is my first year working with your particular plan. I don't know exactly how this has been set in, in the past. I think two, three years ago, it was seven and a half, and it was lowered to seven and a quarter. Usually, the actuary makes a recommendation on the, the particular, most of the assumptions. And, you know, they would be adopted by, you know, either, either, you know, boards such as yours or the, the police or pension fire boards. This, in this particular year, as I said, we didn't make any changes to our assumptions. So we've left seven and a quarter as our assumption this year, even though personally I, I think it is a little bit high. Just due to timing, I, I felt like it was something that we could tackle here in the next 12 months before we do next year's valuation.
Okay. Thank you. Alderman Swanson.
I, I agree. My question was on the expected rate of return. I thought the seven and a quarter was too high and thought that we probably have to reduce it. My question specifically, on page 41, you mentioned the sponsor's net pension liability, if there's a 1% decrease or a 1% increase from 7.25 to 6.25 or to 8.25. Is that sort of estimating where we would be with the unfunded liability portion?
Yes. That's exactly what this is. This is a requirement that's, this is required by GASB, which is the Governmental Accounting Standards Board, which determines how you need to recognize the, the pension, public pension plans in your financials. This is one of the requirements. We have to show some sensitivity. And these numbers are a little bit different than the number that, that we saw on the prior page, you know, not by not very much, but we were showing 17, almost 17.7. Here, we're showing 17.5. Just some differences between GASB rules and State of Illinois rules. But that's exactly what this is, is if we use six and a quarter percent rather than seven and a quarter percent, you'll see that our unfunded liability would go up by nearly $6 million.
And you mentioned that the average you're seeing in the marketplace is six and three quarters, six and a half to six and three quarters?
Yes. It's probably right around six and three quarters is probably the average and the median, actually.
And should we be using the same rate of return for both plans, given that historically they are generating very different rates of return?
Well, that, that's a, that's a very good question. And the answer is, is no. We don't need to be using the same assumption for both plans. It really comes down to how each plan is invested. And if, for example, one of the plans were, and this isn't allowed by Illinois law, but let's just say one of the plans was invested 100% in equities, we would expect a higher rate of return for that plan than the other plan who's only 50% invested in equities. Granted, there would be, that, you know, the 100% plan would be taking more risk, but they would have a higher expected rate of return. So to the extent that there are significant differences in the asset allocations of the two plans, then we should be using different assumptions.
And will you be making that recommendation next year?
Yes. We will, we will look at all, all of the data and make recommendations on what we think the assumption should be. I'm just looking on, on like on page 32, it looks like this particular, the Police Plan has, you know, about a 50/50, actually, yeah, 50/50 allocation between fixed income and equities. The other ones, the Fire Plan isn't quite as obvious because there's so many.
No, they put a lot of emphasis on government securities, which are netting about 1.7. I'm looking at page 77.
Yep.
It's awfully hard to get to seven and a quarter when you're...
Yes. Yeah. And, and we will...
So the, so the recommendation next year will be based on these allocations?
Yes. Yeah. We will, we will look at that information and make recommendations for, for each particular plan. Historically, it looks like we've used, they've used the same assumption, but that doesn't need to be the case. In fact, it shouldn't be the case. Each plan should, the assumption should be set based on their particular expectations. And, you know, one size does not fit all for, for assumptions.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Alderman Bruno.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Jason. Most of my questions have been answered already, but sorry if I missed it in the, in the packet. But there are, there are limits as to what types of investment vehicles that a municipality, we can't throw everything into Google or something.
It's true.
What are those limits? I mean, I...
Well, so I, I think there are, the, what, what the municipality can invest their general funds in is different than what a pension fund can invest in. So for your particular plans, which, you know, are, it would both fall within the largest category, which is great, more than $10 million of assets. The, the Illinois Pension Code outlines specific restrictions on, on the investments. Before 2011, you know, there, there was a, there were even more restrictions, but they loosened it a little bit. And so now, a, each of the individual plans could have up to 55% in equities and an additional 10% in mutual funds. So the mutual funds, primarily, we think of equities, but any, any sort of fixed income mutual fund would also go, go towards that, that, that limit as, as well. So there are, you know, like IMRF, for example, that's the plan that covers all of the, the city's non-public safety employees. They don't have these, these restrictions. They could invest all of its money in, in Google if they thought that was a prudent investment. And there are other, your particular plans can't invest in many of the other types of categories that IMF, IMRF can invest in. So there are some, some significant differences between what your plans can invest in and what IMRF can invest in. IMRF assumes the rate, and this is a net fee rate of seven and a half percent. Getting, you know, getting to 7.25% is, is pretty difficult based on the restrictions that, that these, Article III, which is the Police Plan, and the Article IV Plan, which is the Fire Plan, you know, with those, with the restrictions that they face, it is difficult to get to anything over 7%.
Okay. So just, so I'm clear. So a total, a maximum of 65% can be either directly or indirectly connected with equity?
Yes. If, if, you know, it's based on the, each board's tolerance for risk. As, when we were looking at this, it looks like both plans have significantly less than 65% in, in equities. They could, they could increase that exposure, but there's additional risk that, that goes along with that. So at this point, it looks like we are considerably less than what the maximum is based on, you know, the current investment policies for each of the individual funds.
Thank you very much.
Yep.
Alderman Rodecky.
I, I don't think the funds are capitalized enough to, to contemplate this, but does the code allow for lump sum buyouts of pensions?
Currently, no. There, there is no lump sum buyout of, of pensions. That's not something that's allowable under the Illinois Pension Code. I, I will say that we have seen a number of early retirement incentive programs over, over the years. And some of those programs provide lump sums, but outside of the pension funds. So for example, you know, one place that we worked with was, well, we have all of these, you know, we have a number of people who are retirement eligible. We want, who are tier one, because that's not, that's something that I haven't touched on yet. There are two tiers of benefits. Tier one benefits are significantly more valuable than tier two benefits. So the total normal cost for a tier one person is about 30% of pay. So for every dollar they earn, they're earning about 30 cents to their pension plan. And they're, they contribute about 10, 10, 10%, so is 9.91 or 9.455. So they, they contribute roughly 10%. So the city's on the hook for about 20, 20 cents for every dollar of payroll for a tier one person. For a tier two person, that total normal cost is about half, about 15% of pay. And, and so they can still contribute that same 10%. There's the contribution required, the member contributions are, are the same. So the city's responsible for only about five cents on the dollar for those tier two people. And tier two is anyone who's hired, first hired into the, into a Police or Fire Pension Plan after January 1 of 2011. So what we have seen, back to my early retirement incentive, is people looking to replace some of those tier one people with tier two people. Some of the tier one people haven't been quite ready for retirement, so they give them a little incentive saying, we'll give you a lump sum outside of the pension plan of X dollars if you retire now. And so we've seen some, some of that type of lump sum, but there's no, there's nothing in the Illinois Pension Code currently that would allow any of the individual members' pension benefits to be cashed out immediately.
My understanding is the, the Fire Board manages the investments, correct?
That's correct.
Yeah. And if I'm, if I understand correctly, I believe the City Treasurer is on that board. Is that right?
That's correct.
And has he been a part of these discussions, and he is aware of what you're presenting this evening?
I have, I have not met with the individual boards yet. That's something I'm doing later...
I meant the City Treasurer.
Uh, I, no.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else in the dais? Alderman McGowan.
Hello, thank you for all this information. I have a question regarding the spouse's age on the, on page eighteen. So can you tell me a little bit more about that?
Um, oh, sorry, I need to adjust my page numbers.
Oh, sure.
Okay.
Well, it's, yeah.
Yeah, eighteen, the PDF.
Actuarial assumptions.
Yes, so we're, we're assuming that the spouse's age, that in our, in our valuations, we're assuming that the spouse who's entitled to a pension benefit with, with the members. So for a tier one member, if they're receiving $1,000 per month and that person dies, if they have an eligible spouse, that spouse continues to receive that $1,000 per month until they die. So it's really a joint and survivor annuity, for those who are familiar with that, that lingo. So it covers, you know, you and your spouse. And, and so we have to make assumptions on the age of, of the spouses. And so our assumption is really, it's a standard actuarial assumption, just based on a lot of historical data, that males are assumed to be three years older than their female spouses. So if, if the member is a male, his female spouse is assumed to be three years younger than he is. If the member is a female, her spouse is assumed to be three years older than what she is. And then so, based on those ages, if, if it's a male spouse and he's aged 60, we assume that his female spouse is aged 57. And then we do our calculations based on life expectancies on those two ages.
What about same-sex marriages? This language doesn't sound inclusive.
Well, I mean, we don't make explicit assumptions for, for that right now, just, just because we haven't seen, you know, we, we haven't seen cases where there, it's, it's been a material issue that needs to be addressed specifically. So that there could be cases like that, but we haven't seen the number of those cases be statistically significant enough to have warrant a separate assumption.
I still think that in this day and age, the language should sort of reflect the, the society that the data is being applied to.
Sure.
But I can understand that you're seeing the majority of spousal relationships, maybe, are male/female, but not all, not 100% of them are.
That's correct.
So I, I wish that this report reflected that a little bit more. Maybe that's just a comment to the industry.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else in the dais? Any comments or questions from anyone in the audience? There is no action to be taken by the council tonight. This is merely a presentation. If nothing else, sir, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. And Rita, thank you. Item four, ladies and gentlemen, amendments to the agenda. Are there any amendments this evening? Item five is the omnibus agenda. All items marked with an asterisk are considered to be routine by this council. Any item that any member of the council wishes to remove from the consent agenda can be done with a simple request. Any audience member who wishes to remove a consent item can do so with a simple request. Otherwise, we will consider all items marked with the asterisk with one motion and one vote.
So moved.
Second.
Motion on the consent by Bruno, second by Alderman Marks. Deputy Clerk, please take the roll.
Aye. Burkhardt?
Aye.
Clement?
Oh, sorry.
Ruby?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Maladra?
Aye.
Marks?
Aye.
McGowan?
Aye.
Rodecky?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Motion passes with nine affirmative votes, one absent, and zero nay votes. Jumping down to item ten, folks, municipal bills for payment. We kindly ask our deputy clerk to read the bills in their aggregate for our consideration.
Municipal bills for payment total $1,003,358.08.
Mayor, I move we approve and pay the bills as read. The individual items that add up to that amount can be found in tonight's packet on the city website.
Alderman Bruno makes the motion to pay the bills as presented, which are available on our website and in the council members' packets. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Alderman McGowan. Questions or comments regarding the bills as presented? Deputy Clerk, please take the roll.
Burkhardt?
Aye.
Ruby?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Maladra?
Aye.
Marks?
Aye.
McGowan?
Aye.
Rodecky?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Bruno?
Aye.
Motion passes with nine affirmative votes, zero nay votes, and one absent. Folks, committee the whole items of business. Item 11A is to recommend ordinance number 2018-33, adopting the 2015 additions of the International Residential Code, International Energy Conservation Code, International Mechanical Code, International Fuel Gas Code, and International Swimming Pool and Spa Code.
So moved.
Alderman Marks makes the motion.
Second.
Alderman Bruno makes the second. This matter is up for discussion. I would ask that Director DeGroot and Commissioner Nelson be prepared to perhaps answer any questions that might come from the dais. Are there any specific questions relative to this matter? Alderman Rodecky?
Just a, just a comment. I just got a text from a constituent that said the sound is not working right now, that it's not being picked up on channel time. So I don't know if Pete is aware of that, or if it's just a...
Right. We'll check with Pete. He's behind that magic door. It's good now?
Been on the entire time.
It's been on the entire time? Oftentimes, people tuning in mute this, so... Any questions or comments from the dais? Again, if not, we'll turn to the audience. Is there anyone here with respect to questions regarding this matter? We invite you to the podium, and please share your name and ask your questions, or provide your comments. Very well. Deputy Clerk, please take the roll.
You know, there was some discussion regarding moving off the, I guess I'm not clear on what we look at for the fire sprinklers. Is, is that being, if we vote on this as yea, is that automatic, or, there's some confusion with that, if we could clarify that, please?
Ladies and gentlemen, the audience and those tuning in, I corresponded with Mr. Joe Keim earlier today regarding this matter. I forwarded my response to Mr. Keim to all the council members two by two to preserve the Illinois Open Meetings Act. In short, if there is an affirmative vote this evening, we advance all these codes, save for that which we have agreed to defer until 2020, which is the residential sprinkler requirement. In light of this issue being important to a number of folks, as you, as I indicated in the email, we have reserved September 30th, which is the fifth Monday of 2019, to host discussion on that very topic about residential sprinkler requirements, to determine whether this council wishes to include that moving forward for the 2020 deadline, or continue to defer it beyond that 2020 date. An affirmative vote tonight defers the requirement until 2020.
But, so it will take a, it would take a, a vote then, sometime later then, to defer that? Is that correct?
Correct, or to accept it.
Or to accept it, so...
No action makes it automatic. A deferment defers it. Want to clarify, Mr. City Attorney?
Yes, please. I, I think you have it mostly correct. It's deferred this year. In 2020, if this council takes no action...
Right.
Residential sprinklers will be required in new residential home development and buildings.
Hence the fifth Monday, September 30th, to discuss yet again, to fully vet, to debate, to discuss, and to decide and determine which way we go. And then following that policy discussion, which will be held in this council chamber at 7:00 PM, this committee, at the committee of the whole, can determine, A, we take no action, it takes effect, we adopt, it takes effect, or we vote to defer. And then at the council meeting, we ratify that decision at the committee meeting.
So we don't need to make any motion tonight to do anything like that?
That's correct.
Because we've, we've made the commitment already of the September 30th, 2019 discussion?
Correct.
Okay.
There is a motion and a second to adopt.
There's a current motion and a second to adopt it as amended.
That's correct, as we discussed a month ago.
Right. I, I'd like to, I'd like to address that. Personally, I, I think it's, it doesn't make much sense to wait until September of next year to begin the discussion with us. As a matter of fact, I mean, I've received an awful lot of feedback from residents, from developers, from friends, from everybody I know that, that really has questioned the wisdom with adopting a requirement for sprinklers in the code. You know, this international code, it is an international code, and that particular requirement may work very well in other parts of the world or country, but, you know, I think that it's prudent for us to begin looking at it sooner rather than later as to whether or not something like that really applies to us. And I have serious reservations with adopting that portion in the code. So I'd like to begin the discussion tonight, if, if the council wishes to. I would prefer to, to offer an amendment to remove the section regarding sprinklers in the contemplated IRC with new construction, and begin the discussion now on that. So I would, I would move to amend to remove that section now, and begin the discussion.
I'm going to defer to the city attorney on the motion for one, is that a valid motion? Okay, is there a second to that motion?
I'd second that motion.
Seconded by Alderman Kilburg.
Now, may I?
Now, the matter on the floor is to discuss, I believe, as Alderman Rodecky indicated, removing whole cloth that requirement.
Correct. May, may I address that?
Absolutely, please do.
Thank you. You know, if, if you look at it in the FAQs, which were very helpful on the city website with this, there are several communities that have adopted this and removed the sprinkler requirement immediately. It would be my position that we remove it now, and approach it in the opposite manner. Remove it now, we can always put it back in at any time we want. Just like anybody that's ever wanted a sprinkler in their home could put it in any time they want, whether it's an existing or a new, or, so it just seems to, for a lot of reasons, for me to make sense for that. You know, the, the fact that, you know, I asked for some of the clarifying questions, you know, with our community, you know, do we have a solution, searching for a problem here? You know, we, we have about three residential fires a year. We don't, we hit, last fatality was in 2009. It just seems overly burdensome to me to have, put this requirement in at this time. You know, we have an excellent fire department that's well-funded, well-equipped. We have a town that's well-covered. We have two fire stations. It just doesn't make sense to me at this point to do something like this. You know, I think there's unintended consequences with us mandating people to do this. Just on a personal basis, I know that, and I guess if I asked 10 people, I think I know what the answer I would get, is if you were looking at two homes and they were both identical homes, and one had a sprinkler system and one didn't, and this one was going to cost $8,500 more, which home would you buy? I think I would, I know which way I'd bet as to how people would go. So I don't think it's prudent for us to, to mandate at this time that we do that. Take a look. You know, the, the other, the other thing that concerns me with this is, you know, we're trying to get, keep our, our housing affordable. It's, it's no secret that Illinois is the second highest property tax state in the country, and, you know, if we continue to put these mandates to increase the cost of housing, it just makes us that much more uncompetitive with our, our housing and our housing stock. So, again, with the, the small amount of residential fires that we have, the, the lack of injury, the fatalities with it, it just does not seem to make sense to me at this point to require it. And I think that the other communities that made the choice to remove it when they adopted the IRC did the right thing at that time. It could always be added at another time. Again, as I said, just as you can put a sprinkler in your house if you'd like to, so. Thank you for the time, man.
Thank you. Alderman Kilburg, Alderman Bruno, Alderman Ruby.
I think leaving it in with a review next fall leaves our developers in a state of uncertainty. And as they plan and as they approach development in Geneva, I think this is a disadvantage to development and home sales in Geneva over the next 12 to 24 months. I know we have developers with us this evening. I just wonder if that's a safe assumption. Maybe they can answer that at some point.
We can certainly invite them up once the questions from the dais are presented and considered.
Understood.
Absolutely.
I, I think also, before I finish, I have just one other point. My experience is, I think that we have more insurance claims and we have more damage probably in Geneva from sprinkler systems and failures with those sprinkler systems and insurance claims resulting from, from water damage than probably what result from fire on an annual basis. I'd be curious as to whether or not someone with our, with our fire department might be prepared to, to comment on that, if that's a safe assumption, because I know a lot more people that have had issues with sprinklers failing and, and spending over $100,000 to remodel their homes than people that I know that had fires in their homes.
Forgive me? Alderman Bruno, then Alderman Ruby, according to my scorecard?
Thank you, Mayor. Well, I, I don't think anyone here wants or necessarily needs Geneva to lead on this and be outliers. I think the intent of delaying the implementation with review to further delay it seems to work pretty well, until truly the, the norm does become that. Though I didn't get the numbers to me yet, I did request from my insurance agent, there are discounts in homeowner's insurance for sprinklers. Unfortunately, I don't have those numbers to, to weigh the, the net effect. Alderman Kilburg, you mentioned the damage from failed fire sprinklers. Do you have numbers on, on that? I, I don't know anybody that's had that.
We're going to invite the fire department to come on that and/or the building commissioner, if in fact they have that information available, so...
That's it, thank you.
Certainly. Alderman Ruby, excuse me, a point of privilege? Alderman... Okay, Alderman Ruby, then Alderman Rodecky, unless someone else wishes to speak for the first time.
Thank you. I just, I feel our most responsible action here is to educate people on the issue and not to mandate and make the choice for them. I think maybe the builders, if they could include some supporting documentation with some facts and figures about the success of sprinklers, the affordability of sprinklers, the, the improved safety of sprinklers in homes, in your marketing materials to prospective buyers. I, I just think that is the best route to go, to, to educate as opposed to mandate. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Maladra, I've still got Jim in the wings here.
In terms of education, I think that's an excellent point. One thing that hasn't been asked is, why does the IRC have this provision? What led these code writers to feel that it was important enough to require sprinklers in single-family residential buildings? I don't know the answer. I think we should take the time to find out. And I don't think that we should enact something in an ordinance until we understand why we're doing it. The second thing, I think, I'm old, so I can remember when cars weren't required to have seat belts. And I can remember when the talk came about that cars should be required to have seat belts, and everybody thought it was going to make cars too expensive. And somehow, we survived that, and now today, they don't just require seat belts, but they require airbags and other things. So I think that if a requirement like this does go forward, somehow, we will get through it, and homes will still be built, and people will still buy homes in Geneva, even if they have to have sprinklers. That said, at the time, there were no alternatives to keep people from flying out windows, except seat belts. And today, we do have alternatives to sprinklers. So another thing that I would like to be educated on is why our requirement to have smoke detectors is seen as being insufficient protection. So basically, just a lot of unanswered questions, and I think we should take time to get some answers.
Alderman McGowan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, I have spent time reading online about why there are so many advocate, advocates for in-home sprinkler systems. Just Google "fire sprinkler advocacy", and you'll see lists and lists of professional groups, including FEMA, the U.S. Fire Administrator, all huge advocates of requiring fire sprinkler systems. There are burn advocacy groups, you know, fire survivors who wish that they had... know, fire survivors who wish that they had sprinkler systems set up in their home. People who've lost family members, entire families who've perished and relatives of those families speaking out now, saying, gosh, I wish their new home had fire sprinkler systems installed. If that were the case, that family would probably still be alive to this day. So it just goes on and on and on. And fire departments, a very basic fact about fire sprinkler systems, the reason why people want them to be required for new home construction is because most new homes have open floor plan designs, allowing fires, when they do start, to spread very, very quickly. Toxic smoke and fumes to spread very, very quickly. And also, fires are, get very big and very hot very quickly with open floor plans. And the use of modern construction materials, which are oftentimes kind of porous, burn very quickly. Many, many synthetic materials in people's homes, both building construction and furniture, so all of these things are much more flammable than the typical, you know, home setup would have been like, say, 30 years ago. So there's much less time for people to flee. A residence, when a fire starts, probably, you know, you could imagine how much harder it is when people are sleeping and a fire starts, it's in a home. What else? People with mobility issues, young children, old people, people that want to go and find their pet and, and get the pet out. Meanwhile, the fire is growing very, very quickly and spreading. And I'm by no means a fire expert. I'm just sort of reiterating many of the things that I've, I've read from what I consider to be good sources online. So I am a huge advocate for passing through this legislation and requiring fire sprinkler installation in new homes. Now, people do have a choice. If they are so opposed to fire sprinklers, you don't have to buy a brand-new house. There are many, many, many houses on the market that are already built that don't have fire sprinklers. So it's not like you're forcing people to buy a house with a fire sprinkler system installed. And you're not, we're not forcing people to pay for that. If they want to, buy a home that's already been built and is sort of being grandfathered in. So that's just my spiel on this. I, I'm a huge proponent of safety and saving lives. And that means so much more, infinitely more to me than the cost of the, the increased cost of installation. But I did, I did have a question, maybe Director DeGroot, if you're still here, yes. So when there is a teardown and a new home is being constructed and they leave that one wall, now, is that considered brand-new construction and therefore a fire sprinkler system would need to be installed? Or is that now, if the one wall existing from the old structure is left standing, and then the new McMansion or whatever is being built, is that considered just an addition or remodel? And therefore, it wouldn't need to have the, the fire sprinkler installed?
Do I need to address it now or later?
Since it was a direct question, feel free. I think this might parley into additional questions asked from the dais, but...
The code doesn't clearly define that line, but I think we would use reasonable judgment. I mean, if you're taking down everything but the front wall of the house...
Or a side wall?
But, any wall. If you're taking out the guts of the house and putting in a whole new system and basically trying to skirt that requirement, it's new construction. It's not, it's not a simple remodel or addition to the home.
Okay, I was just wondering, because there are definite legal reasons for keeping up that one wall, as far as, I think, financing the home or whatever. So who would make that determination, though, when there's like a, maybe by the high school where there's a lot of teardowns going on?
It would be our building commissioner.
Okay. And it would be sort of like a site-by-site decision?
Right.
Okay. All right, well...
Depending on the scope of the project.
Okay, well, that makes me feel better, but to know that. Thank you so much.
Without objection, Alderman Rodecky? Sorry about the delay there.
No, no problem. You know, I don't think it's a question of, you know, who's for people dying in fires and who's not. I think the question is, am I smarter than my constituents? And should I substitute my judgment for theirs? They have the right to put a sprinkler in if they want. And to, to, to say that, well, if you don't like it, buy another used home rather than a new one, to me, that's twisted logic. I, I think that they should have the ability to make that decision. I don't think it's my job to, to sit here and substitute my judgment for everybody when it comes to safety items. If we felt that way, then we should require the defibrillators to be put in everybody's home. That would save more lives than anything that we're contemplating here. So I, I don't think that it's a question of, you know, you're, you're against fire safety or, or you're, you're for or against. I think that the question is, is it appropriate for me to substitute my judgment for that of my constituents? You know, I'm not their leader. I'm their elected representative, okay? And I, and I believe I know what my constituents would tell me boldly for this question as to how they would prefer it to go. You know, it's just my feeling for, you know, and, and we don't, we don't vote on popular opinions. I get that. You know, we don't take polls and go with whatever the popular opinion is, but I think that all has to be taken into consideration. So, thank you.
Without objection, anyone else who has not yet spoken wish to speak? Alderman Swanson, okay.
One, one thing I wanted to mention, Alderman Rodecky mentioned that several communities have opted out of this rule, but many communities in Illinois have adopted it as well. And I think we're not putting ourselves at risk if other communities are doing so as well. The, the example, would you buy a house if it's $8,500 cheaper? However, if all houses were, new houses were required to have it, that topic would be moot. So I think if we are adopting the, the IRC, it is an international body, that this rule has been out there for almost a decade. So it's not like we're imposing our will on people. They're, they came up with what they considered the, the best option. So we are adopting a, a rule that has been established for a long time. And again, I don't see, you're, you're absolutely right. Whether or not we have three fires or 10 fires, would that make a difference? Or if there was one fatality in 2009, or there was one last year, would that make a difference? Again, any fatality is too many, and we're helping out not only the residents, but we're also helping out our first responders, who may be going into a house, and they're going to be safer if there is a fire suppression system as opposed to just a smoke alarm that's beeping. So, so I think we're adopting a, a rule that people who know more than we do think it's a good idea. So for that, I do support it. Thank you.
Just a quick clarification. We are discussing the amendment offered by Alderman Rodecky. Alderman Rodecky's amendment is to remove the residential fire sprinkler requirement verbatim moving forward tonight. No consideration in 2019, et cetera. So, on the amendment, anyone else? Alderman Bruno?
To Alderman Rodecky's point about if someone wants sprinklers, they can buy it. We don't leave the option to put in ungrounded electrical systems or knob-and-tube wiring or wooden pipes. I, I don't think it's apropos. There are public safety bodies, and, and we implement what's, what's best for the community. Thank you.
Anyone else in the dais before we turn to the audience? Alderman Ruby?
I would be curious for Chief Antonori's opinion on the issue.
I was going to ask the chief and others to comment on the questions that were asked by both Alderman Rodecky and Alderman Kilburg.
Okay, sure.
Any additional question you'd like to pose?
No, I guess just, I, I agree with everything that has been said. I, I guess the other side of the coin is the only thing that hasn't been said out loud. The, this is potentially a successful lobbying effort, and the sprinkler companies have a lot of money to be made potentially if this passes, so that, just something to consider. Thank you.
Chief Antonori, are you prepared to respond to some of those questions asked in general? As the chief makes his way to the podium, I would like to share with the perhaps newer members of the council, I think some of the veteran members may recall, I also shared this with several people I spoke with from the development community and elsewhere, who I spoke with over the weekend and today. The city of Geneva, many, many years ago, when similar legislation was percolating in Springfield, fought the requirement that all new construction have sprinklers, residential sprinklers. We fought it as a community, and we fought it as part of the consortium that we call the Metro West Council of Government. So we have taken a strong stance in that regard, on the off-chance people aren't aware of that. Chief?
Okay. First question?
Yes, I believe Alderman Rodecky had a specific question. Oh, excuse me, Alderman Kilburg?
Kilburg did, but I don't believe we have the information.
The question was with respect to, do you have any information, anecdotal or otherwise, with respect to the propensity of damage to be aggravated by failed sprinkler systems than by fires?
I have to do some research on that.
You weren't doing that back different?
I don't even know that we get that information.
I don't know. Irrespective of what we get or not, we're simply asking the chief whether he has the information.
I don't, I don't have anything.
Okay. And we don't record that information?
Yeah, no.
Do, are you asked sometimes to respond to sprinkler failures?
Well, yeah, we have sprinkler failures that we respond to for water leaks, yeah.
Okay. So they exist in Geneva, correct?
Yes, predominantly in the commercial buildings that have, have those issues, yes.
Alderman Rodecky?
And Chief, do, or maybe Stephanie, this is for you. There's an annual, just like with our sprinkler systems, there's a backflow check that you have to pay for on an annual basis to have it inspected, to be sure that it's working, so that we're not polluting our water system.
That's correct.
So, you know, to Alderman Bruno, you know, any discount that you're going to get from your insurance company, you're going to pay for your backflow inspection. And you, the, the other thing, too, that with sprinkler systems, I mean, I have a, a, a second property, and I'm always worried about that heat being on in there for the frozen pipes. You know, you have to have something built into that system to warn you that your heat's always on and that your heat's working, you know, if you're not there all the time. It's another issue with it, so. But, do you know how much that is for the, with the backflow check?
It's less than $100 per year.
It's like 75 or something like that? Okay, thank you.
Anything else for the chief? Thank you. Alderman Swanson?
In the event of a fire, would the firefighters feel more comfortable, or are they safer going into a situation where there are sprinklers?
In general, if there's a fire that's being suppressed by a sprinkler system of whatever type, then the fire intensity is less than if there's not a, so that it'd be a safer fire attack than if there wasn't a sprinkler.
So, I'm just seeing if the assertion that I made that first responders would be safer is in fact a true...
That's, that's a very fair statement, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, chief.
Thank you.
Alderman McGowan?
Thanks. A couple other points I wanted to make, just from the research I was doing over the weekend and earlier today. Homes with fire sprinklers already installed do oftentimes qualify for lower insurance rates, as was mentioned. The backflow check is only about $100 per year. When someone is listing a home for sale, if that home does have a sprinkler system installed, that could definitely be listed as one of the home's positive features, along with other upgrades, which do in turn raise the cost of the home, but also make that home desirable to buyers. There's a market for everything. So, also, the damage caused by water from sprinklers when they're activated is significantly less than the damage caused by fire. So when you have a home fire, instead of a blackened room that looks like a hollowed-out piece of charcoal, imagine the cost of having to restore that compared to water damage. Yes, it's expensive either way, but the cost of fire restoration is significantly higher. There, I, I recommend that everybody who's interested go online. There are many videos you can watch of demonstrations where there's a room that's furnished, and a person sneaks in and puts a lit candle in the corner of the sofa. And they watch that room, and there's sensors, and there's cameras, and you can see, you know, second by second, how quickly a fire spreads in a room with and without fire sprinklers. So they'll set up, you know, they've done tests where fire departments have set up identical rooms and homes to show how quickly a fire can spread. And when you see how quickly it spreads and a fire can spread just from one burning candle lighting a piece of furniture in eight minutes, which is about the time it takes for the fire department to arrive and start spraying with a hose, that, that home already has a significant fire going on. Whereas the home in the demonstration with fire sprinkler systems installed, the fire is reduced to a minimum. And this does not, this allows time for residents to escape. It protects the home from damage with smoke and fire. It also protects first responders who arrive on the scene, who, and, you know, this is a liability as far as, you know, financial. Obviously, this isn't the most important thing. Safety and, and prevention of loss of life is the number-one thing here. But looking at it from a financial perspective, there's, what do you call, I guess, a chance, greater chance of injury and loss of life for first responders when they arrive on the scene of a fire. So that's something that the city ultimately has to pay for. So just looking at it from a, very shallowly, from a cost perspective, I do feel like ultimately it's a savings for the city to require that fire sprinklers be installed. Thank you.
Alderman Marks, then Alderman Rodecky?
Just a question. Do, do we know if any single-family houses in Geneva now have sprinklers, or if permits have been issued for any recently? I mean, I don't, I don't know that answer.
I defer to Commissioner Nelson on that matter.
It'd just be interesting to know that.
I've only been with the city of Geneva for eight years, so I'm aware of only two houses.
Okay.
And those were at new builds. They weren't retrofitted or anything like that, so.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Alderman Rodecky?
Yeah, I guess to the statement that sprinklers make a home more attractive and more valuable, I would, I would challenge that a little bit. And I guess I'd like to hear maybe from some of the developers that are present about how, how often they ask for that amendment to be put in a home. I mean, it's like an, because you have the answer, I don't know. So, I mean, you know, amenities to make a home, you know, I have a real estate license, you know, I, I know the amenities that make a home a little bit more attractive, and I don't believe a sprinkler system is one that does that, so. Thank you.
Anyone else in the dais? From the audience, anyone wishing to speak to the matter? Mr. Havelcheck, welcome. We kindly ask this, that you state your name and provide your social security number, please.
Hi, George Havelcheck, Geneva. To answer your question, I've put several sprinklers in Geneva. On Holly Lane, we've often developed it and didn't make the road wide enough. And so the agreement was they, we would put sprinklers in. Now, that was back in the early '90s. Quite expensive. They, they were more commercial systems back then. Very expensive, had to, you know, cut ductwork and insulate and heat ductwork in the attic so it wouldn't freeze. I think there's a lot of self-interest in pushing this. And if you look at how many homes are even available to build in Geneva now compared to that are here, so you're acquiring just a very small percentage of new homes, which are very much safer than any old home, with the fire stopping, the smoke detectors, you know, both hardwired and, you know, carbon monoxide detectors. Also, when you talk about sprinklers, you know, 70%, from what I read, 70% of the fires are started in the kitchen. You ever throw water on a gas, on a, you know, oil fire? It's not a good thing. So, and in 35 years of building, I've never been asked for a sprinkler system. And I think that, you know, saying that they're worth more, it's like having a pool. Some people really want a pool in their home, you know, in their yard. Some people think their little kid's going to drown. So you can read both sides of the insurance companies. Some do discount, some don't. So that's both sides. And I think when you're reading online, you're just reading the people that are for the sprinklers. Read the statistics, and them saying $1.35 a square foot to, to put these in, that's a ridiculous number. And I think a lot of this is caused with self-interest. And would you like to put one in your home? Why are we not putting them in the, the historic homes, which have a better chance of burning down than any, any home in, in town? So would you put, and I'm going to ask you, would, knowing this, that, what you know now, are you going to put a sprinkler in your home?
Well, let me ask you, how do you know for sure that a home in the historic district has a better chance of catching fire than a new construction home?
Old materials. They're not fire-stopped. They're balloon-framed. Old materials, they're not fire-stopped, they're balloon-framed, most of them, which they don't have any fire-stopping between the first floor and second floor. We insulate or stop any wind, or any infiltration whatsoever between first and second floors, and Eric inspects these and makes sure. And we do it, any soffit work, they're all fire-stopped, so the key is not letting fire travel from one area to the next. And now we're in, you know, insulating or putting drywall underneath the heat ducts where the furnace is, I mean, it goes on and on. And you can tell these are being passed because they're pushing sprinklers harder and harder, so they're making it more and more difficult, but we've gone along with all of this. And I was interviewed by the NBC, and I said, you know, listen, if someone wants a sprinkler in their home, we are more than happy to put one in, more than happy. And in thirty-five years, no one has asked me to put one in, in Glen Island, they require them. My AV person says, most of the people they work on their home have shut them off because they're afraid their kids are gonna, going to set them off. And, you know, like I said, with the, the small amount of homes that are really left to be built in Geneva, are we really protecting those people in where they're, you know, with the, in-town here, and with the smoke detector systems, with the fire stopping? You're incorrect, a lot of the new materials are fire-retardant, and they're required to be, as opposed to in years gone by, or, you know, trailer parks and things like that. So, I don't know, picking on one segment, I think if they're gonna pass it, then why not make everyone put them in their homes?
Well, a couple questions, though. I'm not sure why you mentioned trailer parks, but what do you mean by that?
A lot of them had materials in there that were very, you know, flammable, and, you know, they've outlawed a lot of those materials, and years passed.
Yeah. Okay, well, just, in general, neither of us are fire experts, so we are just merely kind of taking in the information that we've received from various sources, and we're probably missing some sources and making, you know, speculation.
You've only read the people that are for it, which I said is, I think, a lot of self-interest.
Ladies and gentlemen, I've allowed some leeway with respect to the conversation, but Roberts Rules of Orders requires all comments to be made to the chair.
Oh, yes.
And whether those comments are relevant or not. Again, the amendment on the floor is from Alderman Rodecky, and that is to remove the language. If there's comments relative to why that language should be removed, and/or why it should be maintained, as previously described, then we can speak to that.
One of the, Alderman here mentioned that maybe a requirement of making it available to people. It was a good suggestion, you know, sure, making it available, educating them, giving them the information on it, if they, if they want it, then they should put it in. And there are statistics about every time you raise a home a thousand dollars, it pushes this many more people out of that market. And I don't have those, we have a lot of this that has been put together, I don't have it with me now, though, and so.
Anything else, Mr. Havelcheck? Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Excuse me, Alderman Bruno, you had a question specifically for George, or?
Just to address a statement, while it is true, it is true that older homes are more vulnerable, I know my home is more vulnerable, I would put one in a heartbeat, but comparing retrofitting an existing home versus new construction is, I just put in air conditioning in a whole, and it's much more expensive than putting it in from scratch. Thanks.
Anyone else in the audience wish to ask a comment, provide? Yes, sir. Again, just share with us your name and George's social security number.
Welcome back. dressed very casual this evening, my name is John from John Henry Builder, but a couple of comments I wanted to make, I thought George did a great job, and I think the cost of the sprinklers, I've heard the eighty-five-hundred-dollar number thrown out there, it's not, I mean, the number's gonna be anywhere from twenty to thirty thousand dollars on a house. We did a house in Stonewood Glen about eight, nine years ago, and I thi, as a favor, the father gave it to the kids, and it was a sixteen-thousand-dollar item, so I don't think the sprinkler systems are gonna be anywhere from, they're gonna be not below twenty thousand dollars in the type of homes that are being built in Geneva. The other comment I have is I said, let people make their own choice. If they wanna build a home and they want a sprinkler system, let them do it. I mean, you can't control everything, and I think, like George had commented, that the building departments have put so many restrictions on us, we've got windows that are larger for regress, we've got fire stopping, we've got smoke detectors, et cetera, et cetera, which has really improved everything. I think the sprinkler system kinda takes it over the top. So I would ask that you let people make their own choice when they build. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else on the matter with respect to the amendment? Mr. Kime, welcome?
Joe Kime, I'm a developer and builder here in town. There was a question asked over here as to how long it takes a typical buyer to make the decision to buy a house, and the unknown of this hanging out there in September affects us trying to sell product today. Our typical buyer is at least a year out on going through the process of pricing out a house and deciding what they wanna do, so it creates a great deal of uncertainty. If Geneva was just here in a vacuum and people could only live here, that would be one thing, but it's not. They can go to Batavia, they can go to St. Charles, they can go to other communities. Most other communities do not have sprinklers. The other question that was asked was about the insurance savings. Eight years ago, we priced out a house in St. Charles, it was a five-thousand-square-foot house. I believe the savings was about two-hundred-and-fifty dollars by not, by having sprinklers, which is just enough to offset the inspection that's required on a yearly basis. Are there any other questions?
Are there any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Kime.
All right.
Anyone else? On the amendment offered by Alderman Rodecky, and I believe seconded by Alderman Kilburg. If not, ladies and gentlemen, we're gonna take a vote on the amendment, a simple majority carries the day, if there are, and this is a majority of those holding office, correct?
Can we clarify what an "aye" vote means and what a "nay" vote means?
An "aye" vote means that you agree with the motion on the second order to remove the language that requires residential sprinkler systems in residential homes, single-family homes, to take an effect in 2020, which in effect would obliterate discussion of this matter on September 30th, 2019. Deputy Clerk, please take the roll.
Ruby?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Maladra?
Aye.
Marx?
Aye.
McGowan?
Nay.
Rodecky?
Aye.
Swanson?
Nay.
Bruno?
Nay.
Burghart?
Aye.
Motion passes with six affirmative votes, three "nay" votes, one absent. That matter has been resolved with respect to the amendment, now we are considering the item as amended. Questions or comments regarding the two-hundred-and-seventeen-word motion that was earlier described? This is item 11A, folks, as amended. Hearing none, seeing none? The motion as amended will be voted on. Deputy Clerk, please take the roll.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Maladra?
Aye.
Marx?
Aye.
McGowan?
Nay.
Rodecky?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Bruno?
Aye.
Burghart?
Aye.
Motion passes with eight affirmative votes, one "nay" vote, and one absent.
Sorry, Ruby.
Oh, forgive me.
I apologize, sorry.
God, my apologies as well.
For sure.
Eight to one it is. Eight affirmative votes, one "nay" vote, and one absent. Item 11A has been resolved and passed as amended. We skip down, ladies and gentlemen, to presentation of ordinances, petitions, resolutions, and bid awards. Item 12A, forgive me, is to recommend approval of resolution number 2018-97, accepting a real estate purchase agreement for the sale of certain surplus real estate. So moved. Motion by Alderman Marx?
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Bruno. City Administrator Dawkins, would you care to provide a brief summary on this matter? Okay, that's good, that's the briefest one we've heard so far.
This is relating to the CTRAM project that we've talked about, selling a portion of the city's property to the developments, so that they can complete their development, of which you passed the preliminary PUD several weeks ago.
Questions or comments from the dais regarding this matter? Questions or comments from the audience regarding this matter? Simple majority, ladies and gentlemen, carries this vote positively. Deputy Clerk, please take the roll.
Maladra?
Aye.
Marx?
Aye.
McGowan?
Aye.
Rodecky?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Bruno?
Aye.
Burghart?
Aye.
Ruby?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Maladra?
Aye.
Item 12A passes with nine affirmative votes and one absent and zero "nay" votes. We are on to item 12B, as in boy, recommend resolution number 2018-98, ratifying purchase and sale agreement in the amount of four-hundred-and-seventy-five-thousand dollars for a real property known as One North Thirty, Three Eighty-Four, Peck Road, Geneva, Illinois. So moved.
Second.
Motion by Bruno, seconded by Marx. This time, the city administrator prepared for a brief summary with respect to this potential transaction.
Again, this is a property out on Peck Farm, it's surrounded by Prairie Green, the funding for this property would come from the Prairie Green Fund. As you know, we've been receiving wetland credits there, so there is balance there, and the bonds have all been paid off on Prairie Green, so that's it.
Questions or comments from the dais? Alderman Marx, Alderman Bruno?
City Administrator Dawkins, when we were talking about this, is this annexed into the city of Geneva, or will we have to do that?
We'll have to annex it into the city.
We will, okay, thank you.
Alderman Bruno?
Thank you, Mayor. In my highly unscientific query of people on this property, some public use seems very, a lot of positive feedback on having some public, public use for this land. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone from the audience regarding this considered transaction? Deputy Clerk, please take the roll.
Marx?
Aye.
McGowan?
Aye.
Rodecky?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Bruno?
Aye.
Burghart?
Aye.
Ruby?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Maladra?
Aye.
Item 12B passes with nine affirmative votes, zero "nay" votes, and one absent. We skip down to item number thirteen, new business and public comment. From the dais, any new business, ladies and gentlemen? From the audience, any new business? Seeing none? Oh, yes, madam? Good evening.
Good evening, my name is Lynn Morvik, I'm a sixteen-year resident of Geneva.
Hi, Lynn.
Thank you for being here tonight. I don't know if I missed what I wanted to share, but I know that there is a local business that's applying for a liquor license in downtown Geneva. I am a resident, like I said, for sixteen years. The reason why I am here is, as a resident, to voice my opinion. I have high school children. I know everybody likes to go into a 7-Eleven, you don't have to be old, young, slurpy candies, it's for all ages. However, I feel as though having liquor available to, in an establishment where they can pick up their candy, they could pick up their pop, they could pick up whatever they like, and having them have access to it and giving children or underage people temptation to either pocket something or to have access to it, I believe is wrong, especially when me, as a resident, can walk out the door, turn right, take forty-five steps, and there's a liquor store. Our kids and our community are inundated with so many different things, like I said, I have children, I'm not stupid, kids are kids, they make bad decisions, which hopefully is not going to be my children, but it very well could be. And to allow them to have access to that, I do not believe it is a benefit or a value to any of our citizens in our community to open the door at this location to allow underage people to have access to this, when, again, we can walk out our door, we're not, and walk a building down, and purchase our alcohol, or whatever it may be, for 21 and older. I do not believe it's an extra added value when it is available to citizens so closely. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other new business or public comment, ladies and gentlemen?